I'll take the ones, if you get started Jeff, I'll take the ones until he does show up.
Okay, we're going to call the meeting of the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners to a quarter. Stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Smasco.
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present.
Commissioner Trello.
Present.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Vandabash. Commissioner Chairperson Boe.
Here. Um, additions, deletions, changes to the agenda, at this time I'm going to move to suspend the rules for the purpose of reintroducing Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-nine to reflect Mr. Rushing as moving passage of Resolution twenty-three thirty-nine, which was the intent of all parties involved.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. So additions, deletions, changes to the agenda, we will make that items N-N. Do I have a motion?
Move to add that as item N-N, as stated. Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Support.
Uh, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item six, A and B.
At this time I'd like to make a motion to approve and file the minutes of the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four commission meeting and the June sixth, twenty twenty-four standing committee meetings.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Um, no proclamations. Consent agendas A through D.
At this time I'd like to make a motion to approve items eight A through eight D on the consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item nine, reports of special standing committee, Steve?
No report.
Lisa?
Nothing tonight.
David?
I'm good.
Joey?
Nothing.
I'll take a pass. Uh, item ten, citizens wishing to address the board, Vanessa Davis.
Good afternoon, thank you for allowing me to speak today. Um, I am coming to the board once again about our issue on Murphy Drive and the many things that we have going on. And bring to your attention, I sent the board, uh, the University of Michigan House study and their case study that they did in our St. Clair Township in Kimball. I know that you probably didn't have time to read it yet because I sent it late, so make you aware of that. Um, so we're getting attention. There is an issue in our area and they clearly outlined it, that it needs more attention, more help, and, um, it's very frustrating. Today, my whole day, I had five major tankers plus, um, three other. It was nitrogen at a small facility that we normally don't have this stuff going on, and it created tremendous stress and anxiety. I'm just a citizen that lives here. Um, I talked to the envi- um, I'm sorry, emergency management. And he's like, oh, you shouldn't be worried about it, it's just nitrogen. Well, I'm sorry, I don't work in the industry, and when I saw that, it brought back flashback to the years that I've had an environmental cleanup trucks, all kinds of things going up and down my road at all hours of night with no contact to the, for the community. And it's irresponsible for St. Clair Township, the state, and anybody else not to take us into consideration. These facilities get to do what they want. Umbridge, I just had to deal with Umbridge a few weeks ago, they were doing major work. We had, um, odor complaints that I had to call the fire department and other people did. They come out and say there's an odor, but they don't identify what the odor is. They go to the facility, the facility doesn't even have to let them in or acknowledge them. They're the fire department, that's not right. Then, I get called the police on because I'm taking pictures and Umbridge just has to use a survey that says clearly I'm there, not intended for legal purposes. It's not right. We need help, and this does affect the county commissioners because we're in your county. Thank you.
Tiffany Turk.
It's been over two years since public discussions began regarding developing Marine City Highway. A year and a half of the public taking the wait-trim survey, attending open houses, attending these meetings, ready and calling commissioners, and filling a town hall with over two hundred people. We all thought we were out of the woods when this board voted to evenly distribute the ARPA funds, but Commissioner Bohm, you continue to pursue developments that the constituents are opposed to, making claims about your vision and plans about Marine City Highway, but it's not the vision that the people have. You're not serving the people, Jeff, you're serving the EDA and your wealthy friends, and even the placement of your political signs proves that. You're placing them outside of your district in various areas around Chinatownship and on Marine City Highway that happen to be owned by individuals who own large parcels of land that they keep in shell companies. I hope that people are paying attention and make their way to the voting booth this August. If we don't make changes on this board in this coming term, our county as we see it now will cease to exist. Thank you.
Robert Felix.
Good afternoon. I'm Robert Felix and I'm running for St. Clair County Commissioner in the fifth district against Chairman Jeff Bohm. At the last board meeting, I watched a citizen step forward to ask this board about any formal agreements or bargaining stances that might exist between St. Clair County Chairman Bohm and Macomb County. County Administrator Controller and the county attorney confirmed, and it is recorded on video, that no such agreements exist. As the citizens who spoke at that last meeting pointed out, Chairman Bohm has continued to double down and is speaking publicly about the desire to develop the twenty-six mile corridor, chasing state funds partnering with Macomb County to make it happen, as well as pursuing other development activities in the county. This instead of helping his constituents in District Five. I have studied the county provided twenty-eight page job description of the board chairman. Nowhere does it say that part of the duties include encouraging or helping to sell our county resources and land to developers and development. Chairman Bohm is attempting to use his parental intuition of what's good for the people to permanently destroy the lives of many residents along the twenty-six mile road corridor without widespread community support. So I'm asking this board to act and clarify, by what legal authority does Chairman Bohm hold talks of collaboration between St. Clair County and Macomb County Executive Mark Hackle? I'm also asking this board to discuss and put forth a motion detailing and describing the powers, if any, of the board chairman relative to promoting and developing property in our county. Residents need to know if he takes these actions with the board's concurrence or if he is acting alone. People of the fifth district of St. Clair County, now is your time to act. The August sixth primary will decide many important races. Most positions that are voted on in August will have four-year terms, including my opponent, the chairman of the board. Get out and vote. I value our way of life and controlled growth that benefits all the residents and not just the people making money from it. I stand ready to serve the people of St. Clair County and I'm asking for your vote on August sixth. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mike Hill for Nick.
Mike Hill for Angus. Um, I am here to talk a little bit about responsible spending. Um, there is a lot of bloat in your guys' budget, uh, much of it having to do with found direction of your chairman there. Um, Jeff says he's a, uh, jobs and tax base guy. Jobs and tax base, jobs and tax space, you guys have heard it over and over and over. We don't need the jobs, at least not automotive ones. Let's expand out, let's be smart about this next time we do have an automotive recession. Let's look towards jobs that aren't having to do with automotive. That way we protect ourselves a little bit more, that would be more smart. That was the job that should be going after Jeff. Um, as far as the tax base, I kind of already talked about that. You guys have plenty of money, but when that money is being diverted from things such as the landfill, things that should go towards the landfill, to things like the convention center, things like the airport, how is this helping the average citizen? How is this helping the average person in this county? I was trying to see some numbers on how much money has been diverted from the sanitary landfill fund to the convention center and to the airport. And over the last, one, two, three, four, five, six, six years, it's been four million dollars. Four million dollars. Most of that going to the convention center. Um, that's four million dollars that you guys could have had to figure out how to not poison the people of Kimball Township and figure out how to deal with that methane issue. Instead of paying two hundred and ten thousand dollars a year to the airport so rich people can fly their planes. There's no average people using that airport. If you guys got to subsidize that airport, it's time to raise the fees on the guys using the airport, because this is not on the taxpayer. We aren't using it. The vast majority are not using it. So raise the fees over there, make, make the rich guys that like to take their little flights on the weekend pay for it themselves. We shouldn't be doing it. Um, I found it interesting when I was looking at how much money was actually diverted into the Blue Water Convention Center, because the leader of, or the director of ASM Global, uh, you know, that's who runs the, the convention center, the manager that, he said during the pandemic, a lot of our expenses go away with, when events go away. But I'm looking about how much money you guys have given that convention center over the years, and it's a little weird because two thousand seventeen, five hundred and forty-four thousand, two thousand eighteen, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, two thousand nineteen, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, two thousand twenty, pandemic, five hundred and twenty thousand, two thousand twenty-one, four hundred and eighty-four thousand. Where did the expenses go down? You guys are still paying the same amount to the convention center pre-pandemic that you were during the pandemic. So the numbers aren't adding up here. Around how much the convention center in Detroit made?
I'm gonna-
Eleven million dollars.
You're three-
Twenty-two.
You're three months-
Eleven million dollars. Twenty-six percent profit while we're still in the red, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Wrap it up.
Come on, guys, let's start using the money responsibly.
Libby Pearl.
Good evening, this is kind of the same statement that I gave two weeks ago, but, uh, Jeff, you weren't here and, and a lot of this applies to you. Um, my concern again is twenty-six mile road, and, um, especially the interview that you, uh, gave to Cranes, um, with Mark Hackle, and Mark Hackle, Hackle also made some statements at the Magnot Conference about proceeding with the twenty-six mile road development. Um, I find it disturbing that the two of you only see One Way of Living, and, um, what it does is it steps upon the rural culture that we've developed in the downriver area, which I feel that you do not respect. Um, the other thing that concerns me, Jeff, is I just don't understand who empowered you to develop twenty-six mile road through an intergovernmental agreement with Macomb. Um, you aren't a, you aren't a county executive, you are the chairman of our Board of, um, uh, Commission. Um, but this board seems pretty split on how they feel about the development of twenty-six, so I don't understand, I don't recall in a meeting where you were authorized to pursue, um, an intergovernmental agreement to continue development of twenty-six mile road, which no one in that area, very few people in that area support its development. Um, Mark said that he finds you entertaining, but I think down river, we, we jump downriver. It's, it's just no longer, um, anything that we can even remotely, um, tolerate. Um, the rural culture along twenty-six mile road should not be sacrificed for Macomb County labor, um, resulting in more pollution and traffic, including increased public services that we would have to provide to, um, deal with the crime, drugs, and public safety issues that come along with industrialization. Um, we don't like this. Um, this is not about tax revenue unless the EDA has no intentions of requesting tax abatements. Um, I feel that this is about you making good on promises to your EDA buddies, um, to make them richer than what they already are, and it has a lot to do with politicking. Um, no matter who you represent in this state, public leaders should advocate for the welfare of the citizens. St. Clair County residents, we are not disposable. Um, our neighborhoods should not be treated like a commodity, like a commodity. Um, we have thousands of acres of life across the tri-county area that can be repurposed if Mark Hackle needs, um, factory space for, for his labor. Um, we need to protect farmland, we need to respect diversity and living choices and hold rural and small town culture sacred. I do appreciate some of the work that you've done in the past, but we have to focus on your failures right now because the failures are what's really hurting us. The landfill, the Wrigley Center, Blue Water Convention Center, uh, everything to do with Jeff Kowalski, this county is struggling, and I think that we need a different path and a new vision. Um-
Need to wrap it up, Libby.
Okay. The jail is a mess, et cetera, everything that the guys before me said, I, it, we're all being redundant here.
Wrap it up.
I just hope that you guys will consider this and do something about the pursuit of twenty-six mile road. Thank you.
Okay, there's no unfinished business, we're going to move on to item twelve A.
Ah, twelve A. Uh, at this time I move to approve county disbursements for the month of May twenty-twenty-four in the amount of twenty-seven million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and twelve cents.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Smasco.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Trello.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe.
Yes, item B.
At this time I'd like to make a motion to approve the add-on sales agreement with Patagonia for a state, state of Michigan lab interference at an initial cost of five thousand, five hundred dollars and a monthly subscription cost of a hundred and ten dollars for a term expiring September twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-seven.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Trello.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe.
Yes, item C.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Keith Nickel to the Community Mental Health Board as a member-at-large representative for the remainder of the three-year term expiring three thirty-one twenty-six.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item D.
This time I would move to approve a contract renewal, the library system with, uh, Senegage Learning for the provision of Gail courses for a term of six twenty-nine twenty-four through six twenty-eight of twenty-five in the amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Trello.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe.
Yes. Item E.
At this time I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program reallocation request, increasing the grant by thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item F.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment to the memo of understanding between St. Clair County and City Port Yern for the year ending twenty-twenty-three for Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistance Funding.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item G.
At this time I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four Bulletproof Vest Program Grant Application in the amount of twelve thousand, six hundred dollars.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item H.
This time I move to approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four Marine Safety Program Grant Agreement in the amount of one hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred dollars.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed. Item I.
At this time I'd like to appoint Sarah Chen as facility representative and to remove Patty Troy as facility representative on the local emergency planning committee.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item J.
This time I would move to approve the master services agreement with Lexa Paul for the Sheriff's Department, a subscription service in the amount of one hundred thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and seventy cents.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Trello.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe.
Yes. Item K.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four Homeland Security Grant Program, Operation Stone Garden Grant Application for Emergency Management in the amount of seven hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item L.
At this time I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four Port Security Grant Application for the Sheriff's Department in the amount of three hundred and seventy-six, six thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item M.
Uh, at this time I would move to appoint the St. Clair County Groundfield redevelopment Authority Board, uh, Lori, Lorelei Natkey, District One, remaining a three-year term expiring ten thirty-one twenty-four, Scott Beeden, District Four, for the remainder of a three-year term expiring twen- ten thirty-one twenty-five, and Lindsay Wallace, Metro Planning Director, the remainder of a three-year term expiring ten thirty-one twenty-five.
Support.
Support.
Discussion.
Yeah.
Steve.
I, I, uh, Joy called me on this, um, on, on the appointment and the, uh, persons appointed having to reside within a district, and I, I looked at the statute, it had no, didn't designate that. I had, uh, staff, I want to thank staff for doing that for me, Jenny Posey got me six or seven different, uh, resolutions over the years that formulate the Brownfield Authority, and all it said was the nine people. But in, in talking with Jeff Bohm today about that, I understand there are bylaws, so, on your question, uh, Joy, because I told you, I didn't think there was any requirement for district, uh, residency, but I'm not sure that's the case, did, uh, Carrie, did you get a chance to look at that bylaw?
So the verbiage in the bylaws says a person will be appointed to represent that district, um, so it did not specify they had to live in the district, but they would represent that district.
Okay, so, and the subject and the, the way it's set up is the board, uh, would, the chair would, would appoint with the approval of the board, so, so that's, that answers the question. Did you want to look at that further, Joy, or no?
No, I was reading as well, and I didn't see where it says that they had to live within the district, uh, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David?
Yeah, historically, is this going to be for every appointments we make, that people not within the district will be able to represent districts? For various boards, mental health board, and, you know, uh, various positions, are we gonna, because historically we've always gotten somebody from that specific district.
They're in, the bylaws, most of them spell out that they say district, correct me if I'm wrong on all the stuff that I have, with the very specific-
Okay.
-boundaries, this particular one does not.
I, I don't have an issue with it, uh, I think he's going to be qualified and all, but it does raise a concern that, you know.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
Second to that, who, who seconded that?
Item.
Okay, thank you.
Item N.
At this time I move to approve the memorandum of agreement with the Department of Natural Resources for grant funding for the Island Loop Water Trail in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for a term of ten one twenty-three through nine thirty twenty-six.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item O.
At this time I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-four dash twelve to commence with the materials management plan.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item P.
At this time I'd like to make a motion to approve the hanger-ground lease agreement for lot T dash A with Tailwind Holdings LLC in the amount of twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars for a term of July first, twenty twenty-four through July first, two thousand and fifty-four.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Vandabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Trello.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe.
Yes. Item Q.
At this time I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four Fragmities Adaptive Management Framework Grant Program Application in the amount of thirteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars, twenty-three cents.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item R.
At this time I move to adopt Resolution twenty-four dash eleven, imposing the twenty-twenty-four summer property tax levy.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item S.
At this time I make a motion to approve the Health Department renovation and relocation project, not to exceed five million, five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars as outlined, and as well as award project not to exceed $5,568,795 as outlined, and as well as award General Contractor Burnco Inc. in the amount not to exceed $3,754,000 with a funding source of $5 million designated from ARPA funds for internal projects and the balance of 568, excuse me, $568,795 from the Health Department fund balance.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
Item T.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to award the Health Department renovation and relocation structured cabling and camera to Division 27 for the amount not to exceed $74,034.20 with funding provided from the designated ARPA funds for internal projects.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
Item U.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to award the Health Department renovation and relocation additional contracts as follows. Preferred glass for the door frame replacement, $24,550. St. Clair landscape and irrigation for paver repairs, $2,470.95. Dyke security for expansion for the alarm and access control, $19,372.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
Item V.
This time I would move to approve the maintenance agreement with Civic Plus for a term of 7/12/24 through 7/11/25 in the amount of $9,447.90.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
Item W.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Regal Construction in the amount of $1,5,641.30 for the emergency management window replacement project.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
Item X.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Allied Building Services in the amount of $39,404.75 for emergency management HVAC upgrades.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
Item Y.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Ainsworth Electric in the amount of $161,000 for the installation of the district courthouse elevator generator.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
Item Z.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a UniMac dryer for the Intervention Center for the amount of $10,913 using American Rescue Plan Act Funds.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
Item AA.
This time I move to approve the probation office renovation project in the amount of $144,775 in the agreement with Salaski Construction LLC as the contractor for the project.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
CC.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Commissioner District 7 American Rescue Plan Project for the City of Marine City in the amount of $15,000 for two election tabulators.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
DD.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the St. Clair County Courthouse roof replacement in the amount of $862,750 in the agreement with KJP Roofing and Sheet Metal as the contractor for the project.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
EE.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the change of funding source for the administration building chiller project from the public improvement funds to the American Rescue Plan Act Funds.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item FF.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Commissioner District 1 American Rescue Plan Act Project for Brockway Township in the amount of $26,520.9 for building addition.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
GG.
I would move to approve the Library Directory Employment Agreement with Allison Arnold for a term of 6/27/24 through 6/27/27.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
HH.
This time I move to approve the addition of one building and grounds worker to the building operations and maintenance manning table.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
Aye.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract extension with Interwest Technology Group for the IT Department through May 31st of 2027.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item JJ.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Commissioner District 7 American Rescue Plan Projects for the City of Marine City Police Department for the purchase of body cameras in the amount of $14,250.
Support.
Just out of curiosity, Dave, how many is that?
I can't remember, but I don't believe it was over six or seven.
Yeah, okay, just curious. Um, roll call.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
KK.
This time I would move to approve the contract with DuPont LLC for an IT assessment in the amount of $98,392.06.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
LL.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a new 2024 New Holland Power Star 120 tractor loader from Richmond, New Holland in the amount of $113,126 for the airport.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
MM.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the SolarWinds Software Subscription Agreement for Information Technology with SHI in the amount of $23,252.97.
Support.
Discussion. Uh, roll call.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
NN.
This time I move to accept the Second Amendment Resolution as previously written.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item 13, Administrator's Report.
Last month, PFN was here to do a community broadband briefing. They had a meeting at the Doubletree. Many community partners were there. They spoke about their current broadband projects that they have, that they're currently undertaking, and they're looking at one that would have fiber that goes from Port Huron to Flint is the one that would affect our area. So more broadband projects going in. 123net was also there. I know we've also had meetings with them and RISA. I know they partner with RISA in possible BID funding. That application, we believe, will open in the fall of this year. I also attended the CMH annual meeting, and at that time, they give out their annual awards, and St. Clair County Juvenile Court was honored as the Organization of the Year. You may have, some of you may have heard or may not, but we do have a sinkhole on our crosswind runway at the airport right now, so that runway is currently shut down, obviously, for safety reasons. We are reviewing what potential fixes are. We will be getting some engineers out there to take a look at it and see what we need to do. Kind of on a parallel path, we are working on having with the state on what we need to do on the needs assessment or the justification, because as you may recall, our crosswind funding has been pulled, and that runway is no longer eligible for grant funding. So depending what happens in this justification study, if this runway is no longer eligible for funding, the board will have to make a decision if this is a runway we want to continue to maintain at 100% of our cost, or if we just want to take that runway out of service. The Retirement Board met earlier this week, and the annual actuary meeting has been set for August 20th. And as part of legislation, every five years, you are required to have an experience study to study all of your different assumptions that you use, so that is also being completed. Currently reviewing a proposal from Tetra Tech, we have been working with their wastewater treatment specialists to review some PFOS solutions that we could be implementing at our landfill, and they'll also be doing a feasibility analysis regarding the proposed grant that Kimball Township is proposing. So that agreement will come to you at your July meeting. That's all I have for this evening, unless anyone has questions.
Questions for Carrie? Steve.
Carrie, on the Tetra Tech, we now have their official proposal. Can we get that on the committee for next month to look at that?
Yeah, that was my plan. I have some questions into them because I know they have two pilot studies as part of that. I was questioning the necessity of doing those different pilot studies, or if we should go through the analysis, see where we're at with the chosen solution, and then do a pilot study on that one versus multiple. So I'm still kind of going back and forth because the cost came in quite a bit higher than I anticipated.
I'm sure you're working with Matt Williams on that, but how do we interface with the board on the decision on what direction to go, to get it on committee?
So the agreement, the, once I'm satisfied with the price and the scope of work, will go on, I'm hoping for July 11th for your July meeting. And I guess that's another thing I should mention, your July meetings are the second and fourth instead of the first and third because of the July 4th holiday falling on a Thursday. So it'll be on the second and fourth Thursday.
Second and fourth Thursday.
Yes, not the second and the fourth, that's second and fourth Thursday. And that was on your adopted schedule that you adopted earlier this year, so that's not a change. And we will publicize that on social media as well.
When are we going to be in a position, you think, to talk about the direction for this landfill plan and the solid, the material management piece of it? Is that, I know that's coming out, coming forward.
Well, so you passed the resolution tonight to start the materials management process, so the notice of intent will be filed tomorrow with the state that we are intent to do a single-county plan. We will be advertising the positions that are available for the Materials Management Board, because that is a different board, separate board than from the current Solid Waste Board.
Required by statute.
Yes, it will eventually replace our Solid Waste Board. However, our Solid Waste Plan is in effect until the new Materials Management Plan goes in effect, so there is going to be some overlap.
It's a three-year, under the statute, it's a three-year rollout.
Correct.
And this board will have to be established.
Yes.
So...
So we will be listing the different positions because they're specific, some, they represent different items, and that's all spelled out in the statute. So we'll make that list, people can apply, and then this board will appoint people.
And that's, that's separate, that's a separate process from, say, a master plan, but I know there's been some discussion about, you know, the need for a master plan for landfill as well. Is that going to track together or separately, or how do you see that happening?
Well, a lot of what goes into a materials management, our materials management plan that will replace our current Solid Waste Plan would somewhat align with a full master plan. Now, a full master plan would probably have the addition, well, would definitely have additional information in it, so that would be something that would be pursued in addition to, but would work together with. That makes sense. It's a separate document, but it's a lot of the same information.
I guess my, the idea would be to get, I'd get, what are all the possibilities? What are all the options for landfill? What direction do we want to go, you know, with this new material management aspect, as well as the various directions of what's occurring to landfill? And we're going to start looking at that, I think, so the process for that. What's the timeline for that? When do you see that rolling out?
Well, right now, we're just wanting to make sure we hit all the materials management deadlines. You know, there's that July deadline for our notice of intent. We'll be sending out the, doing the required publications, notifications to local units, and then as part of that, we can begin working on the materials management work plan. Staff will begin working on that, so we have something to, once the committee is appointed, they'll have a starting point to start reviewing that.
Right, well, that's under the, for this material management plan, you know, if we didn't notify them by July 6th, they were going to, they would do the plan for you, and we don't want that, obviously, so we'll get that in there, but I mean, are we going to run that together, this idea of the vision for the landfill and the master plan for landfill? Will that track together with, I'm assuming that somehow that all fit together?
It goes together, but a full master plan is going to be separate than the materials management plan, because the materials management plan is going to talk about the things that are required by statute. I think conceptually, your, the board's vision for the landfill is going to be broader than what we're maintaining.
Right, are we going to, are we going to start looking at that together, or one and then the other?
That would be up to the board, if you would like to do that. Sooner or later, we could certainly put together an RFP for that.
All right, thank you.
Do I have a motion to receive and file Administrator's Report?
Move to receive and file Administrator's Report.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. No miscellaneous business to come for us.
I have just one, one note, Jeff, I'm going to just make a note on this Murphy Drive with Ms. Davis came before us. I received some information, she did provide that material, that study from U of M, it was a student study, environmental study, and I have read through it more than once, and I know that it was sent to Dr. Nevin, or Remington Nevin as well, and it's my understanding that, you know, he's looking at that to see if there's any health aspect to that, and I do know that the county does have an environmental ordinance, I just haven't had a chance to look at it. So, I mean, I want you to know that we look at it, we've read it, that it's a township issue, it's a state issue, it may be somewhat of a county issue, but I understand, from my understanding, so far, we don't have anything from the Health Department that it is a health issue as such, you know, from the level of the Health Department. So I just want you to know that's where, what happened so far, as far as I know.
Okay, motion to receive and file.
Make a motion to receive and pile, file packets that were sent to commissioners, packets at their places, and any other information presented.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
16 adjournments. Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eric Hearn.